I'm going to call to order this Lacey City Council meeting on June 25th, 2020. Once again, in order to comply with Governor Inslee's proclamation, we are conducting this meeting remotely. Given that, we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Hi.
Pledge of Allegiance.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now, we do have an agenda, consent agenda, items for us. Can I get a motion to approve today's agenda?
Move to approve the agenda and consent agenda as posted.
I second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, sign the part by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. And first up on our agenda is, once again, public comments were sent to publiccomment@ci.lacy.wal.us. And Scott, can you confirm we haven't received any public comment?
We did.
Oh, we did.
You received three comments, which is part of the record.
And so that, yeah, those, those comments will be part of the record. I'm sorry I missed those. And so that we'll be able to see them as part of this record. So next, next up is our referral from the Hearings Examiner for Project 19-194, conditional use permit and wetland development. Application for the Hawks Prairie Sister Stanpipe reservoir. Is Sarah going to?
Yeah, Sarah's coming in.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Today, we're going to review a request that was submitted by the City of Lacey Public Works Department for conditional use permit approval to construct a 2 million gallon water reservoir adjacent to our existing Hawks Prairie well site. The reservoir is necessary in order to sustain the Lacey drinking water system while the existing system is down for maintenance. Construction is going to include the reservoir, access road, offsite improvements, piping and the stormwater system improvements, as well as improvements to site security. I'm going to try to share a screen with you now to show you the location and what is surrounding. Just bear with me for one moment. Can y'all see that?
Yep, yeah.
Okay, great. So the project, as I mentioned, takes place. The application actually includes a request for a class four forest practices permit for tree removal associated with the project, as well as a wetland development permit application for impacts to buffers to two offsite wetlands. The project is classified as a type three essential public facility that's reviewable through the conditional use permit project. It's located on 41st Avenue, the southeast corner of 41st Avenue and Marvin Road northeast at the site of the existing Hawks Prairie reservoir. To the south and east is property zone light industrial. And it's currently being developed with large warehouse distribution facilities. This is a bit of an old aerial, you know, it looks quite different than this right now. And then to the north of the project site is the Hawks Prairie planned community. And west across Marvin Road is existing larger lot, single family subdivision or single family housing. The Sister Stanpipe is well sited, located, it's proposed to be located south of the existing reservoir on the project site. Well off the Marvin Road right of way and screened by existing mature vegetation. As noted, a wetland development permit application was required for impacts to the buffers of two offsite wetlands. And those are located south and sort of east of the proposed improvements. The impacts are associated with the installation of a buffer fence or a site security fencing and impacts to the buffer. The fence is gonna surround the entire well site, including the existing reservoir facility to improve security there. And the buffer, the impacts are really gonna be to the buffer and migration of habitat of wildlife through the buffer to the wetlands. It is just cutting off a small portion of the wetland buffer. And mitigation proposed will include restoring the existing onsite buffer, improving habitat for wild birds and small mammals. And also, the restoration would include, would provide improved water quality associated with that existing buffer. So as an essential public facility, in addition to normal public notice procedures, those included notice to property owners, posted in the paper. We posted the site on the city website and as well as onsite. And then the Public Works Department also provided a project website. And notification of that website was provided to owners within a thousand feet of the facility. We did only receive one comment during the application review period, and that was in relationship or in regards to construction noise. A hearing was held, a public hearing was held on May 22nd. This was a virtual hearing because of the COVID-19 situation. It was held via Zoom. The notice of the hearing with information related to how to attend the public, the attend the hearing was sent to all parties of record as well as adjacent property owners. We didn't have any members of the public attend the hearing or provide comment prior to the hearing. At the hearing, staff, the applicant and the consultant team provided testimony regarding the project. Topics included wetland buffer impacts, construction noise, neighborhood compatibility and stormwater management. No members of the public, as I mentioned, attended. The Hearings Examiner did because of the current situation with COVID-19 and the inability to actually attend the hearing in person. He did allow the record to remain open for a week past the hearing date. And this was to allow testimony for anybody who may have been unable to comment via the Zoom, who couldn't figure out how, how that would work, or who was unable to register. And we didn't receive any comments during that additional open comment period that was left, that the Hearings Examiner left open. Based on the staff report and exhibits and testimony at the hearing, the Hearings Examiner recommended approval of the project with conditions substantially as recommended by staff. And tonight, towards this afternoon, we're requesting council approve the project as recommended in his report dated June 10th, 2020. That is all I have for you.
Sarah, can you end, stop sharing your screen?
Sure. Sorry.
Is there any questions for Sarah? Councilmember Cox, then we'll go Councilmember Greyside.
I don't know if this would be within budget to do this, but because this is going to be such a large facility and because it is in an area where there is residential. Is there any chance that we could do some sort of artistic improvement that would make it a little bit more attractive? Or blend in? I'm kind of thinking of like the, the big tank on Tom Water Hill where it was painted with forested tree line.
I don't know that that was considered for this tower. I do have, I could share the screen again, some views of the existing reservoir. So it's gonna be located south of the reservoir. And it's actually, I believe, shorter than the existing reservoir, so at least from Marvin Road and 41st. Because of the screening of the trees, it's not, I don't know how visible it's actually going to be. I could show you, if you wanted me to share my screen again, how the existing reservoir looks from the right of way. But it will be, okay, it will be south of that. Let's see.
I think that's really the only big question here too, is what's gonna look like from the surrounding community.
Yeah, so this is the existing reservoir. And this is heading south on Marvin Road, just as you're coming out of the roundabout. And this would be heading towards Jubilee. And this is the existing reservoir, as you can see. So the new one will be located behind that and not, there's, these trees will eventually grow up, but it won't be as visible as this existing reservoir, as the existing is. Here's just one more view. But I don't believe that painting it was considered this time with this reservoir, painting it artistically, I should say.
Councilmember Greyside?
Yeah, just, um, probably an odd question, but in, in the past, I, I know that one of the reasons that we have our summer water, watering restrictions is primarily because of storage, not so much the ability to produce water, but it's the ability to store water. With this additional storage, would that give us the ability in future years to not have to necessarily do the water restrictions in the summer?
So I think we're in a posture of always having an odd even watering posture, just because it's now considered a best practice. And it also avoids us having to build additional reservoir sites or pumping capability, as well as pressure zones. I think Scott's coming online to maybe provide some other insight on that.
Okay. I was just curious, because the question has come up recently from the public to me a couple of times about if we, if there's ever any chance that we wouldn't have the, the alternating days. And I just thought maybe having additional water storage would help with that.
Yeah, I think a misperception is one of those things where we do need to scale our infrastructure for the most, you know, the most prominent need, which quite frankly, the summer months is a peak demand issue. And so you're overbuilding capacity, which are millions of dollars, which puts pressure on ratepayers for really the, maybe the convenience of watering during the summer when you could get by with doing our current practice.
Yeah, so the quick answer is it really doesn't help us with that issue. The water shortage response plan that we put together is based on all of our wells running, you know, so many hours a day. And, and so, yeah, in, in short, it, it won't change our practice of odd even watering.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
Can I pose one more?
Sure. And then I'll go to Deputy Mayor.
Okay, thank you. I believe Sarah mentioned something about improved water quality and I, I guess my question is, does this refer to water that flows out into the wetland butler?
Yes, that's what it refers to. Improved water quality going to the buff, to the wetland itself.
All right, good. That sounds like a good thing. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
Um, so we have the option to modify the recommendation from the Hearings Examiner. Would that include potentially adding an additional requirement to add at least a, a painting the outside of the water tank?
You know, the thing is, is right now, this is, I think it's a matter of cost compared to, you know, you know, doing to get this project up and going. I think the, the further, the discussion I would like to see in the future is, are there opportunities on public facilities where we can incorporate art going, you know, at some point? I, I don't think that would have to be right this second. Matter, matter of fact, maybe the, the first reservoir would be a better location, more, more visible. But I, I wouldn't want to make it conditioned upon, upon this approval personally, but.
Well, I wasn't saying condition, I was adding an additional condition, but not necessarily stopping it. But I was just, I was asking if that was possible.
Malcolm, Deputy Councilmember?
Yeah, I just, I was wondering, do you think that this will help us to, you know, build more residential housing in the area so we can help deal with our, our housing shortage that we have here? We have to turn away a lot of people who'd really like to live here because of our, our short inventory.
So the question you're asking is really a water supply and water rights question. And in our, our water supply and water rights, the rights that we were awarded in, say, 2013, it's gonna be challenging to get more beyond that. So when those run out, you know, we have to seriously look at things like summer, summer rationing, summer conservation, because irrigation is the big user. And then also, you know, how can we best use reclaimed water and generate more reclaimed water? But, yeah, this in itself won't really contribute to, to that.
This should just help with what pressure, water pressure in the area though?
Well, this, so the water pressure is somewhat a function of the, the height of the reservoir. Plus, there's a booster station there that boosts the pressure that's in our 400 zone, which I believe is our highest pressure zone. But, you know, remember that the main function of this sister tank is so we can take the main tank offline and rehabilitate it.
Yep.
And then, right, sure. Once we, once we have taken the main tank offline and rehabilitated, then we'll have just that much more storage. Is that the, is that the end result here?
Yes.
Is there any other questions? Can, can I get a motion, please?
I would move that we approve the Hearings Examiner, I, I don't have the number in front of me, recommendation.
I second it.
So it's been moved and seconded to approve the Hearings Examiner's recommend, recommends proposal for the conditional use permit for the associated wetland development permit in class, what, five forest practice permit related to construction of the $2 million gallon reservoir, which includes the access road, the offsite road improvements and stormwater system improvements at 40, 40 Marvin Road northeast. Is there any further discussion?
When would you guys, when would you guys be able to start?
So this is planned to be a 2021 construction project.
Yeah.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of that motion, sign the part by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next up, I, I do want to go back to, you know, the conversation you had Deputy Mayor about art and looking at opportunities. I, I do think that is something that, you know, would like, I'd like to discuss at, at some point where we have opportunities to do something like that, maybe with a public-private partnership of some sort. Or I, I think, I'm right, I, I know where you're coming from and that I agree that we should look into it at some point.
Well, I know the PUD did that with the school, I can't remember the, over, off of us, what, School Road or whatever? And, and it's darling and lovely and it fits in with, next to the school. And I think the school helped paint it, actually.
Councilmember Cox?
I'd just like to remind the council that I don't believe we've actually disbanded the committee that was put together to recommend a public art project for the city around the, help me, Scott, the, the.
How's an act of fashion?
Right. Hundred thousand acts. So, I mean, that, that kind of got set aside for a while because of various reasons. But I think probably that group could be tapped if we want to do some planning going forward.
Yeah, that's a good, good call, for sure. So next on our agenda, under resolutions, that's the resolution 1094, extension, emergency resolution of 1085. Dave?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good afternoon, councilmembers. So to refresh your memory, in March, obviously, we, the council adopted resolution 1085, declaring an emergency. That resolution has now been extended a couple of times. We are still in the midst of this pandemic. Facts would support extending this emergency. So before you is a resolution number 1094, proposing just that, an extension of this emergency. I will point out that aligning with past practice, we've extended it, proposed language to extend it another four weeks. Council may choose to have alternate language that could extend it for a longer period, perhaps effective until January of 2021, unless sooner terminated or further extended by formal council action. So with that, I'm certainly happy to answer any questions.
Mike, I, I had this conversation with our, our city manager. And I, I do feel like we need to extend this emergency declaration until probably, you know, January 1st or December, end of December 31st. I know on January 1st, there's some other things that are gonna come into effect that will affect this emergency declaration. So I, I think it makes sense to, to move it. I mean, we're, we're not gonna be out of this emergency anytime soon. And so having to come back every month, just to extend it one more month, doesn't make a lot of sense. But city manager, we did talk about, there's a couple of things we might need to look at within this. You want to talk about that?
Yes, you may recall, there are a couple of items that as long as the emergency ordinance is in effect, they would carry through. So there was the signage allowances that allow more flexibility with, say, A-frame signs and temporary signage for businesses. That probably would still need to be in effect as long as there's an emergency, just to accommodate the businesses under the different phases. So that probably would not change. Even though council suspended the, the ban on plastic bags and also the suspension of the five cents, if this extends to December 31st of 2020, the new state law would actually take effect and then override any local ordinances relying on a ban of plastic bags. So January 1 of 2021, the new state law comes into play. So that actually would take care of itself also. You may recall, last time, we went back to sort of normal agenda business in terms of city council agendas. And we've also incorporated work sessions, so that would be unchanged. And the only other issue on there would be suspension of penalties or shut offs, which I think you'd still maintain as long as there's the threat of COVID-19 and we're still doing these challenging issues with our utility customers.
So basically, go ahead, Dave.
I'm sorry, I would add to that, council also took separate action to suspend any adverse action by way of foreclosure for unpaid local payment. So that would also carry forward for the duration of this emergency.
So, Councilmember Greyside?
So if we were to just go ahead and do that through the end of the year, if things change, we can always cancel at any time, correct? if things change, we can always cancel at any time, correct? By vote of council.
That's correct.
So in that case, I would make a motion that we extend the emergency order through the end of twenty twenty.
For a second? I'll second it.
No. Maybe it wasn't such a good idea.
Uh, discussion, is there any discussion? Councilor Miller?
Yeah, I've been to several of stores, uh, you know, in, in regards to the, the plastic bags and, and the, the charge and the, and what they're charging for bags. And, and none of them have changed their posture that I've seen, uh, in the slightest. Like they didn't get the memo that, hey, we're no longer charging for bags. Do we, do we notify them or how do we communicate that with them? So that they understand that, hey, you don't have to charge for these, but you can, or how's that?
Yes, you may recall, once, uh, council did, uh, uh, make that extension, we sent a letter to the, I think, the Northwest Grocery Association. And we also contacted all the grocery stores in the area relating to your action.
So they just decided, well, we're just going to keep on rolling with it and?
Yeah, I can't say that we've spot checked it, but they've definitely been notified.
Gotcha.
And they still, I mean, they're still able to, so they're a call.
We never said you, you can't do it anymore, did we?
Before, our, 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 our ordinance actually mandated that they charge five cents. You know, you're right, they can continue to charge five cents, but, but that's on the, the grocery store. That's not on the city of Lacey. And, and sometimes, you know, what's so, what's so crazy, I had this conversation with, I think, uh, one of the store managers, Fred Meyer, um, and he says, they haven't, they didn't have a, they couldn't figure out how to take it. It automatically went on their, into their programming and they couldn't figure out how to get it out of their programming. So they just had, had left it. And then they tried, and then, then they think they found a way to do it and then, I don't know, so. Yeah, I just want, I want the public to know that this isn't coming from the city of Lacey. Scott?
I was just reminded, the, the suspension of penalties or, um, action against, uh, shut offs actually ends July twenty fifth. That's under the governor's guidance. So if you did extend this, then my, I'm looking at Dave, then that probably would extend to the remainder of the year. There's two things going on. We have our own local ordinance that dictates what we could do. But then there's obviously an overlap with what the governor's actions have been going on month to month. So I just want to make clear that we could actually be more generous than the state law or state proclamation.
Certainly. And would this emergency is extended without amending the temporary procedures related to utility billing? That would stand for the duration of the, uh, emergency.
Councilor Cox? You're muted.
All right. Before we vote on this, could Scott and perhaps Dave just walk us through exactly what this would look like largely for the benefit of the public? So everybody understands what things are going to look like going forward if this motion passes.
Dave, you want to take a stab at that?
I can do that. Yes, Councilmember Cox, this resolution, there's currently, um, been declared by this council, an emergency to exist in the city of Lacey. That declaration, um, will expire today unless extended by council. What council is considering is extending that resolution through the end of the year, as I understand it. Now, there's been other actions taken by council that modify some of the policies and procedures of the city um, during the emergency. Those include, um, no delinquent, um, water utility or no utility bills, um, will be, will suffer, uh, late payments or shut off during the, i- in case they can't pay during the period of this emergency. Likewise, no, um, foreclosure action will take place against any, um, local improvement district, um, property owner that has a required assessment that has failed to make that payment. No adverse action can take place against them during this, um, emergency. Interest will still accrue as it would normally, um, and the obligation to make these payments is still there. The, uh, there's some regulations, um, by way of signs that have been suspended during this emergency, which would allow particularly restaurants and the like who may need to use more signage to allow, make the public aware that they're even open or have alternate hours or alternate delivery procedures. So we're overlooking some of the sign regulations during the period of this emergency. And then finally, there's, uh, as we discussed, the, the plastic bag, um, ordinance has been temporarily suspended for the duration of this emergency. Um, and then there's finally just the council procedures, um, have been slightly adjusted. Uh, the, the main one being that we're meeting remotely and, and council's authorized to meet remotely. Um, and the, the meetings are at four P M. And so that encaps- encapsulates the changes that council has made due to the emergency. In addition, extending the emergency is going to allow the city to take advantage of any, um, federal aid and whatnot, to reimburse it for expenditures made due to COVID.
Councilor Bason?
Thank you.
So I, I just have one question on that. So I'm good with all of it except for the idea of us continuing to meet remotely for the rest of the year. Um, I think as soon as possible, we should be back in chambers for, for open public meetings personally.
Do I guess I'll clarify, it, it, you're not prohibited from meeting. It's, you're, you've made action to clarify that you can meet remotely. You're not required to. Right now, you're required to because of the governor's order. Once the governor's order, um, ceases, then council can make a decision whether they choose to, uh, meet in person or not. And that can happen regardless of whether or not the emergency still exists.
Excellent. Thank you.
So Dave, the, the question did come up, um, if, say, we decided not to meet back at city hall, would we be, would we be in violation of Open Public Meetings Act? Or does this venue, um, meet those, those requirements?
So there's some competing thoughts on that. Um, my opinion is that the council could continue to meet remotely, um, without violating the Open Public Meetings Act. There's frankly no requirement in the R C Ws that I can find that mandate a particular place. I mean, the term, uh, room is used at times and I, maybe the word place is used, but it's always in the abstract. Um, and there's nothing to indicate that a meeting like this, absent an emergency, um, would violate the Open Public Meetings Act. Of course, that is assuming that, you know, the public is notified, the public has an opportunity to participate, the public can view the meeting, can actively listen, um, those sorts of things that are being provided right now would of course need to continue. But everybody being in the exact same room at the same time isn't a, isn't a requirement.
Okay, Deputy Mayor?
So I know in many other Zoom meetings, they have, um, um, participants, um, room and on Zoom and a attendees of, that can, um, be participating on Zoom, uh, but they're in a separate, um, section. And then they can be looked at and stuff. We haven't done anything like that right now. But that is totally capable by doing that through Zoom. And you can even do breakout rooms and stuff. And, um, so if we had to meet by Zoom, it's not like the public, uh, has to mail in their comments all the time. They could actually be there.
Councilor Cox?
Well, I, I certainly don't want to do anything to jeopardize the health of the public by having meetings back at city hall. I think we need a lot of precautions if we do that. But, you know, I just haven't been comfortable with the level of public participation in our council meetings. I think cutting off public comment at a certain time on a Thursday and not having any opportunity for an exchange during meetings is limiting for the public. So I, I want us to be really thoughtful about how we, how we handle this. And maybe a hybrid meeting with some public allowed in or phone options, maybe, what we do.
I, I, I agree. I, um, in our other interjurisdictional meetings, um, there is an opportunity for the public to, um, speak. You have to, it, it's kind of tricky because you're, um, you can run into an issue where there are, are people who have no intention of giving public comment. They're just, uh, want to use the opportunity to cause, you know, chaos and, I mean, called, they call it, uh, Zoom bombing, you know, and un- unfortunately, there's a lot of, uh, government agencies who have tried to do this, have experienced it. And, um, the problem is, is, uh, there's like a, a couple second lag before you can tell if it's an actual person trying to do public comments, um, or not. And so you have to call in the person, you unmute them and then you're praying there, something offensive doesn't come out, um, where they're, they're just trying to, um, you know, cause problems. Um, you know, that happened at, uh, our, our last transition policy board meeting. Uh, and they actually were able to take over the whole meeting and we couldn't mute them. And we had to cancel the meeting, we had to leave the meeting and come back into the meeting. And it was, it was really disruptive. Um, it was really embarrassing, to tell you the truth. Um, so, uh, yes, there are opportunities to, to do that. Um, but I think those comes with a risk, risk as well. Um, so I, I, I agree. I don't, I feel like there should be this opportunity for the public to speak, but.
Well, that goes back to the heart of the issue. If we do go back to a hybrid system, then theoretically we would be physically present at the council chambers. Um, and then you would have that same opportunity for someone to walk in, make comments at the mic, um, as before. But again, I think everyone needs to be mindful of the fact that we're still trying to social distance. If you don't need to make a comment, um, there's other means to do that.
Councilor Bason?
Yeah, I mean, at the, at the beginning of the COVID pandemic, we did that. I mean, we had a few of us there. We spaced the, uh, public seating, you know, far apart. But we did have a few members of the public there at that first meeting as our edge mayor of all.
Yes, that's great. We would have said council chambers a little bit different, um, doing that forward. But I, I definitely think, uh, that's a possibility and we can discuss a little bit more of that, um, under the, under the mayor's report as, as well. But, um, is there any other discussion on this emergency declaration? Scott?
So I just raised one issue. Again, I think, um, the direction council is going is, um, appropriate. I think what we would do is check in with you, um, on a month to month basis on the issue of, say, the suspension of fees or shut offs with utilities. We just want to be mindful that if then we start getting a dramatic increase of people not paying. I mean, as you all know, fees suspensions are part of sort of the, the process to make sure people do pay on time. And we still need to have a functional utility.
Understandable. Uh, given that, it's been moved and seconded to, uh, approve this resolution ten ninety four, which will extend the provisions of resolution ten eighty five declaring emergency in the city of Lacey in regards to outbreak of COVID nineteen in Thurston County until the end of the year. All in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. So next up, um, is the mayor's report. And under the mayor's reports, uh, the first agenda item is Lacey Youth Council Policy Recommendations. And I think hopefully Kelly can get online and walk us through some of these. There she is.
Good evening, council.
Aye.
Let me see if I can share my screen here. And that is not an option. Okay, so we're going to improvise. So my name's Kelly Adams.
Yeah, sorry, you're, you're not a host.
That's okay.
You have to be a host.
That's all right. So my name's Kelly Adams. I am your Lacey Youth Council.
Oh, there you go.
Oh, wonderful. Thank you, John. I'm your Lacey Youth Council Coordinator. And next slide, please. In my role, my mission is to support your mission to proactively engage with our community's youth and to empower our youth to become future leaders. We do this by creating a parallel organization to city council that has a mayor, a youth mayor and, um, five council members. So if you remember at the work session on March fifth, which I have a fun photo here from that last meeting, it was one of our last in-person meetings. So at this meeting, the youth mayor, the deputy mayor and council member Vialobos presented their first project to you, which was their draft policy. And this policy would go into your, um, city council policies and procedures manual. And at this meeting, council, uh, approved the draft and forwarded the policy for formal adoption. Unfortunately, because of COVID nineteen and all of the delays that we've had, we've not been able to discuss this at a council meeting. If you go to the next slide, John. So their second project was an outreach effort that would have begun at the Lacey Cultural Festival. And unfortunately, that was the first event cancellation in a cascade of cancellations. Um, next slide. This is our current twenty nineteen, twenty twenty Lacey Youth Council. I have placed asterisks next to the names that will be leaving us through graduation. So we will be losing, uh, a representative from River Ridge, Timberline and North Thurston High School. We currently have six applications from North Thurston and River Ridge, but nothing from Timberline. So we are really trying to focus our recruitment efforts towards the end of the month on Timberline High School. And on the next slide, we can show you our application that is on our website and is due June thirtieth. And I'm happy to answer any questions about youth council.
Can you stop, uh, sharing this room? Yeah, perfect. So, uh, yeah, go ahead, Councilor Cox.
We're very close to June thirtieth and since we haven't heard from a couple of the schools, would it be too hard on staff if we were to extend that deadline for two to four weeks? Just for example?
I think the challenge, we have a couple of challenges right now and there have been some recruitment challenges and having the schools closed. We've advertised the application on the high school websites. Um, but there are not a lot of staff on site right now. So I can see us keeping it open a little longer, but it does push us against the next school, school opening date. But again, we're not, we're not sure what the fall looks like for North Thurston Public Schools.
Councilor Cox?
Uh, is there a, um, minimum age, uh, to be eligible as a, uh, youth council member?
So we're recruiting juniors and seniors. So the, the ideal candidate would be able to serve with us for two years.
Okay, yeah, right. And, um, the other, uh, um, high school that we've been struggling to get some participation with is the alternative high school. And, uh, I actually happened to make contact with, I think, a math teacher there by chance who was going to, um, had, was having a meeting with the, the principal, like, I think the very next day, he was going to talk about this as well. And they're going to try to hopefully push some more information out to their students. Because ideally, that's what we are hoping to have, that a representative from each of the high schools plus someone who's, you know, running start work or homeschool. Um, you know, in the first year, we sort of ran into the same situation we're running to right now. We, um, we kind of got a later start to it and then we put out applications, uh, near the, to the year. And we didn't have anyone, we couldn't get anyone to apply. And so it, it took all the way to the beginning of this school year, um, to finally have a full youth council. Now here, we're on the exact same situation. And, uh, the whole strategy, uh, going into this recruitment was that the current youth, you know, uh, council was going to do a lot of recruitment on their side, you know, to build the presentations back at their high school, um, to, you know, get the school excited about youth council and stuff like that. But we just, we, then COVID happened and everything sort of fell apart. So I really do feel bad for, um, this first year's youth council. Uh, it got a late start and we kind of had to reorganize the, you know, after we started. Um, and then COVID happened. And so, um, luckily there will be having, we'll have some members come back. But yeah, we have some recruiting efforts to do for sure. Is there any other questions about the, the youth, Lacey Youth Council? Is there any other questions about the, the youth, Lacey Youth Council Policy Recommendations? Can I get, I need a motion to approve the Lacey Youth Council Policy.
I move that we approved the Lacey Policy.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in pair with the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you, Kelly. Good seeing you, Kelly. So next up on, under the mayor's report is the appointment of Robin Vasquez as to our planning commission. We opened the planning, we had an opening on our planning commission. There was some, a couple of issues that happened early on and under the first rounds of applications. And then COVID happened. And so we sort of, I hadn't, it's been open this entire time. Several weeks ago, I, I reached out to Rick Walk and said, you know what? We really need, you know, as the planning commission is starting, going to start meeting again, we need to have a full planning commission. So we re-advertised for the planning commission. We had several really good applicants. And one of the applicants I thought was so great that I was like, there's, there's, it's gonna be really hard to be out this applicant, you know, even though we had one more interview. And sure enough, the very next interview was Robin Vasquez, who was absolutely amazing. And so I, my recommendation is that we appoint Robin Vasquez to the planning commission for the first term. Is there, can I get a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion. Councilor Greenstein.
Just one thing, normally when we're doing these appointments, the application is attached to our, to our packet. So that we can review it. We did not have an application attached this time. So unable to see anything about the candidate.
That is a good call.
Yeah, I was wondering.
Really, I really liked the, the opportunity to see that preferably before we vote, but.
Is there? Scott, where's Rick on the line? Where?
I thought that the applicant was emailed to city council. If not, if council did not receive that, what we could do is put that as part of the packet for the work session next Thursday. And you make your formal action then.
Are you comfortable with that, Mayor? Or do you need it sooner?
I, I have, I have no problem. I think you'll be very, very impressed with that applicant. Deputy Mayor, do you have something?
I was just wondering if somebody could give us a, just a summary of him, of
Of her?
If that would help, but, but if we could do it in next week, that's fine too.
That's fine. I, I think, I, I kind of do remember seeing that the applications for her go out, but maybe, maybe, maybe it didn't. I don't know. Maybe that just, maybe it just went to me, obviously. So let's, then let's do that. Let's make sure we get her application out to the full council. And then we can, we normally wouldn't, oh, there's Rick. You want, you want to address this, Rick?
Thank you, Rick. I was having some technical difficulties.
I am. And now I, you know, it looks like I'm very, don't have a good camera here. I apologize. I got froze up. So what was the question?
We usually have the, the candidate's application attached. So they, and we send it out to the full council for them to look at. And if you have any questions, you know, they, you know, notify myself or and we're not sure if that happened this time, Rick.
Yeah, the packet, the application was provided. I'll find out what happened and I didn't see the packets that went out to the, to the council members. And we can make sure that we have that for everybody tomorrow and preparation for next week.
Sounds good. Usually sometimes it's, it's attached under the, under the mayor's report, the application's on there.
Yeah.
But we will, we'll make sure it gets out to, out to everyone. And we can have a discussion next Thursday as well.
So we'll just table the vote for the work session. Cause we can do this at a work session without a problem.
Yes, you can.
We can. Yeah. When, when's our next, when's the next planning commission meeting, right?
Next planning commission meeting is July, that first Tuesday in July. So it's the first or the second.
So we'll have, I think we'll have some so it's the seventh. And so we'll, we'll, we can probably approve this at the work session on, on the second. And so it'll give, give her the opportunity to attend that first planning commission meeting. So we're, we're totally good. And thank you for that. It's up on that. I, you're, I didn't even notice it. So I appreciate it. So the, the, this is, that motion is now tabled until our next meet, our next work session meeting on the second. My final, under mayor's report is that, that council meeting schedule. And I know this is something that we talked a little bit about already today. You know, are we going to meet in person? Are we going to continue to do Zoom meetings? Right now, under our emergency ordinance, it does say that we will be meeting, doing, you know, meetings at four, four o'clock. Regardless, whether it's a Zoom meeting or a hybrid meeting. And so the, the question is, is, you know, through this time and also really specifically kind of looking at this council. It's maybe an opportunity to sort of rethink, you know, when we should be meeting as a full council. Not only for, for council meetings, but also for, for work sessions. And, you know, right now, I'm sort of, I'm pretty happy with meeting at four o'clock. I think it's worked really well for our council meetings. And for our work sessions, you know, a lot of times in a, in a work session. You know, it's really a study session for, for this council to sort of do deeper dives into issues before they go to a council meeting for, for discussion. The key point there is, do we have an opportunity for the public to, to, to witness that work session? That's always been a, a question and a concern, which is why we've always sort of pushed the meetings off to seven, seven o'clock. However, if we can figure out how we can continue to have this hybrid meetings, I think it really adds the ability or actually the public to probably participate more often in, in their local government, at least watching their local governments. Because we're just, you know, on either their smartphone or their, their tablet or their computer. And they might have actually more of an opportunity to participate. We can figure out some of the some of the, some of the concerns around public comment for sure. And so this is really kind of a, the time to discuss. Is four o'clock okay? Is Thursday's okay? You know, going forward? Or should we look at a different time?
Um, so a couple of things. I'm not locked into Thursday necessarily, you know, we could even have it Monday. So we could have it Tuesdays. But I am, and I know other cities are having it Tuesday. I, I question whether we should always have our council meeting at four. Because people aren't off work yet. And so it's kind of hard even to be on your phone when you're at work. Trying to deal with that. So maybe even I'm, I'm not sold on seven because that's really late in some ways. But even maybe five thirty might be better because you could eat and you could still do things. But our work sessions, I don't see any reason why you couldn't have them early like four. I mean, so that's my two bets. I, I don't know whether it's good to break up the time differences between a work session and a business meeting, but I don't see that being a problem. I don't know.
Councilor Greenstein?
Well, I, I share the same concern that Deputy Mayor does in that. I think right now, while so many people are either out of work and or working from home. The four o'clock seems to be working well because if you look at the numbers, I think we've actually had a, a much higher attendance to these meetings than we did when we were having our live meetings at seven o'clock. My concern though is as the economy reopens and people go back to work and are back at their regular jobs. Four o'clock would be a difficult time for anybody who's working, I would think. That, that's my only real concern there. As far as the day of the week, you know, it's, I agree. It doesn't matter what day, other than we all have a lot of other commitments and we've all built our schedules. At least I know I have built my schedule around meeting on Thursday at seven o'clock. So it works well for me. But again, I'm, I'm open.
Councilor Cox?
Regardless of what we decide, I, I think consistency should be key. Where if we choose to continue Thursday meetings, I believe they should be at the same time every Thursday. Whether we're doing a, a work session or a council meeting. Just so the public is, is in that, that groove, so to speak. And there isn't any miscommunication about timeframe. But I'm also open to changing the day. I, I personally, I would rather do council meetings and work sessions on Tuesdays versus Thursdays. But, but I'm open.
Councilor Cox?
I'm, I'm open to changing the day to possibly Tuesday. Wednesday would not work for me at all. But I, I too believe that once people start going back to work and working actually in offices rather than home. It's going to be harder for those who do have basic nine to five kinds of jobs to attend. And I don't want that to be a barrier.
So I, the, the, one other question that has been brought up is it, it depends on when we meet. But if we did meet on, on a Tuesday, there could be some conflict with TCTV being at two places at one time, right? And so Scott, you want, you want, yeah, three places. So want to address that? Scott?
Yeah. So there's a channel capacity issue in terms of airing the meetings for Olympia as well as Tom Water. Maybe not so much for Board of Commissioners, but there could be some overlap because they also meet on Tuesdays. And then just from a staffing standpoint, I don't think they're insurmountable, but it's something, if we do decide to go to Tuesday, we need to kind of walk through that.
Councilor Greenstein?
I guess my only question is, are we really accomplishing anything by changing to Tuesday? I mean, Thursday, for me personally, I prefer Thursday. I find a way to make Tuesday work if that's what council wanted to do. But what, what are we accomplishing? You know, we're changing the date, but are we doing anything that for any reason?
The, the only reason why I bring up the change in day is because there are a lot of community events that the city of Lacey council gets invited to. And they all tend to do it on Thursdays because that's when everyone but the city of Lacey has off. And so what happens is the city of Lacey does not end up attending a lot of those events. Cause we have our council meeting. We said, sorry, you know, and, and they, and it, and it happens all the time. I mean, it's like, oh, sorry, it's a Thursday, I can't be there. And there's, there's, like, for example, every single four, four, sixth airlift wing event, the honorary commander of the four, four, six. Every single event has happened on Thursday. And so I haven't nailed ten hardly any of those. And so it just, Thursday seems to be a, a pretty popular day for community events. And we've been sort of left out of them in Lacey for a long time.
I would, I would agree with you on that because I do miss a lot of Thursday events for that reason as well. But I'm just not sure that the same thing wouldn't happen if we were meeting on, although if we meet on Tuesday, you're right, the other councils are meeting. So there's probably less.
So I guess the next is, is the whole bandwidth that we did meet on Tuesdays. What would be the suggestion there, Scott?
So if council wanted to go that direction, we could definitely explore it and then come back to you with a work session and say, this is how it'd look. I know I'd mentioned to even the mayor that maybe even council meetings, whether your council meetings just go from the first and third either Tuesday or Thursday for the entire calendar year. Cause you know, we kind of do a swap on Thurs, or I'm sorry, November, December, and then January, and then we go back to February. That's somewhat confusing to folks. This is an opportunity to kind of look at that too, from a calendar perspective and just make it more consistent.
And there's, there's, there's also been some suggestions, well, for example, you could do a, a, a work session that started at four o'clock on, on Tuesday. And then go to a council meeting later. And so we, we just have meetings on the second and the first and, and, and third Tuesdays of every month. Regardless if it's a work session or, or not. And, you know, sometimes I feel like we, we've been having work sessions just to have a work session, you know? I, I'm not, I, I think I, maybe the deputy mayor is the only one who remember early on in our first year we were elected. We didn't have a work session every Thursday. The work sessions were as needed. And then all of a sudden, it, it became a thing where it's like we had to have a work session regardless. And I mean, Scott, maybe you can, you've been around longer than us. So maybe you can talk about that historically.
No, that is, that is accurate. Work sessions were as needed and, and as I think the more frequently times that we met in work session, it became an almost a thing where we have a work session. It becomes almost an impulse to fill it. But there's also a lot of outside groups that still want to have an audience before council. And so that became a natural opportunity to engage with council. So it, it, over the years, you are correct, this became almost a, you know, an automatic, you're going to have a, a Thursday work session.
Well, so maybe at next, next week, work session, we can maybe if you have some advice or a recommendation, we can take a look at it and do a little more research on, on the capacity issue. And we can talk about that going forward. But you know, as, as of now, we're scheduled. Our, our work session is set for next, next Thursday at four o'clock.
Correct.
Okay. And so maybe again, at that work session, we'll, we'll, we'll talk about this a little bit more.
And maybe just to have maybe an open discussion. So Dave's on the, obviously on this too. Assuming the governor does not extend OPMA, that would potentially be physically at council chambers. Is that everyone's understanding?
Yeah.
Although I think, I imagine if, if there's a council member who does not feel comfortable being physically at that, you know, at city hall, then we will set up a Zoom. So you can participate, just like we did that first meeting. And so I know it might not be ideal, but I'm just, I think it's a I think it's a good opportunity for these, you know, if you're having concerns to, to make sure you're, you know, those concerns are being met.
What, what I have concerns about is that people forget that if they're sick, they're supposed to stay home and things. And if you're right next to them, they spread whatever they've got right next to you. So and being, being old, I can't afford to get COVID nineteen. I just can't. So I, I worry about that, that people might not think about that when, and struggle in and then say, oh, well, I'm sick, but oh, well.
Dave, you have something?
No, I don't. I heard the city manager say my name, so I figured. I guess I would only reiterate that, you know, it, it's not a requirement that, you know, rush to city hall if the governor, if the governor's proclamation isn't extended. So.
The only other thing that I think we're gonna, maybe we're gonna have to play a little bit by ear is to see what would an actual full meeting be like with a face mask on at all times. You know, it sounds like, oh, no problem, we could do it. But then we, we get there and, you know, two hours into a meeting, it's not so good. So I, I think it's again, it's sort of up to, we, we can try, we can try it. Let's see what happens. Deputy Mayor, I, I agree. I think if you want to go stay home and go through Zoom. We'd support you a hundred percent on that.
I have multiple masks and I've actually will have not yet, but disposable masks, which are more breathable. But I have cute masks because I've Disposable masks which are more breathable, but I have cute masks because I've been sewing, but um. But still, you know, there is that, as I said, that concern, and the public doesn't often. Care about us, so they will struggle in without a mask and so forth. Now, we'll be farther away from the public, I'm sure, but.
Uh, Councilor, your sign?
I would just say that, you know, obviously completely support your position, your situation there, Deputy Mayor, and I think we should definitely have. A Zoom option or, you know, whatever option for anyone who has underlying health issues or just isn't quite. In that position. Yeah, I mean, any any of the higher, you know, group, higher risk groups, or like I said, just anyone who isn't comfortable at this time, because that's. A personal decision, and we should accommodate it.
And the other thing is is I don't want to give up the Zoom meeting access to the public yet either. I mean, as we all, as we all know, we've had more people viewing our council meetings than we 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 have historically had, and so. I think it's uh, I think we should continue that. City Manager?
So it's kind of an open question, and Dave may be getting way into, so we will, I guess, prepare for a hybrid meeting on July second. That would be under the assumption that the governor's order is not extended. In the chance that the governor's order is extended, we would fall back to an all Zoom meeting?
That's correct. Right, Dave?
That's council's decision. Uh, again, council can default to an all Zoom meeting irrespective of the governor's order.
Yeah, but but there's a chance the governor tells us we just be home, right?
And if the governor's order is extended, then we will not be able to meet in person, period. If the government's order is not extended, it's entirely up to this council whether. To meet in person or whether to continue to meet remotely.
Councilor Cox?
I assuming the governor's order to wear masks in public will continue for the probably at least till the end of the year. And so I guess the question to city manager is, will people be allowed into city hall without a mask? Or if they show up wanting to come to our meeting, will they be provided a mask before they can enter?
Yeah, we would prepare the fact that if they did not have a mask, that we'd provide them with one. And that that clearly would be in violation of the governor's order because they're in a public place indoors without a mask.
Thank you.
Councilor.
Why don't we plan uh, to open the council chambers later in July? Instead of being in unknown territory, whether or not the the governor is going to extend. Uh, that decision or not, uh, but why not? Why not just instead of having that uncertainty, why don't we just plan our own certainty?
I mean, that's certainly the prerogative of of this council. I I my gut is also telling me that um, next Thursday is still. A little too soon, given so much uncertainty that's going on right now. Um, and all all it's yeah, and I I feel like we've been a productive council. Under this format, and we've also still have allowed. Um, the public to participate or at least to have access to our meetings more than they have probably ever had before, so. Um, although we have been doing Facebook Live for a while, that's not something that's new to this council. Um, so uh, I I don't know where the rest of the council stands on this. I the only thing about next Thursday where it's kind of nice to be in in person is that. Uh, we're going over a bunch of, we'll be talking about this uh, when we adjourn to a work session, um, but we're gonna be going over a quite few applications. And sometimes it's it's a little bit easier to go through those applications. Um, you know, in person and have have them right in front of you instead of trying to do them electronically and flipping back and forth, and that I I don't know. Councilor.
Having the masks on, and I I understand your point, Mr. Mayor, I think you're spot on. Uh, that being said, that the masks are going to be inhibiting that interaction that you're that you're speaking of. And I I don't know, I my take on it is we're we're communicating fairly effectively using Zoom. And uh, my face isn't covered when I'm talking to you, and it just makes a little more sense. Uh, to to use the technology we have and remain consistent.
Is is there a consensus? I I think um, I think Scott, you you said it right, you know, I think let's prepare for a hybrid. A meeting, if you feel like you really, really want to be at city hall, um, then we'll we'll provide that space. Um, but maybe encourage a Zoom meeting, but you know, we'll we'll go from there. Um, I think that that solves all the problems, right? We'll have a Zoom meeting no matter what, uh, and. Um, if if you want to show up in in person at city hall next Thursday, then we'll we'll accommodate that as well. Does that sound? Sound like a plan or?
Sounds acceptable.
Uh, Deputy Mayor? Uh, mute mute button, Deputy Mayor?
There was noise in my bed back there, so I put my mic on. Um, if we're. Uh, partly or mostly doing by Zoom, can we um? Are we able to put, share the screen so that we don't have to kind of go back and forth on? Or print out sixty plus applications, or what shall we do about that?
Yeah, we just.
I I think to some degree, just going forward, we'll just start playing on hybrid meetings, so you always have the option to do Zoom depending on your um. You know, in terms of your comfortability, and if you happen to be sick for whatever reason, that'd be a good opportunity to stay home and still engage in council meetings. And like I said, we'll just play it by ear, we'll prepare for a hybrid meeting unless the governor extends the OPMAs. Um, proclamation, and then we'll just be an all Zoom meeting until that timeline.
But I what about sharing the documents for um, our um?
Right, so we'll make sure that everyone should have an application if we're talking about the Community Based Committee on Homelessness. And then we'll have an opportunity to share the screens for um, if we go through some kind of tally process or a list process. But we'll work through that technological gap.
Probably too, by the way.
And so for planning purposes, do you need council to let you know whether we're going to participate via Zoom or in person?
Correct.
Okay.
So in time between now and next, you know, I'd say by what, next Wednesday at the latest, uh, let let the, you know, city manager know if you're gonna be there in person. Or not. Given that, um, we're on to uh, boards, commissions, and committee reports. And I'm up first. Um, oh, Mr. City Manager, sorry, skipped over you.
That's right, I know we had a long conversation, I'll make this fairly quick, but just for the benefit of council and the public. Uh, we do plan on opening next Monday, as you all know that now Thurston County was approved for phase three. Uh, so that actually provides less restrictions to the public, as you know. Um, but it also coincides with the governor's very direct order that masks should be worn at all times, very specifically so. Uh, when you're outdoors, you cannot maintain six feet of distancing, and definitely when you're indoors and you're in public spaces. Um, just very quickly, we will be open on the twenty ninth of June, that'll be Monday. Will be open Monday, Wednesday will be closed on the holiday for Fourth of July, um, and will be open from ten to five P M. Just for the benefit of the public, we are trying to do as many services by appointment only. And I think as the public has already um, learned that there is many alternatives to do the same services. Um, basically online or alternative means, there's very few services that you actually have to come into city hall. The one exception is really if you had to pay for a building permit, and we're actually working on a solution. Um, as we talk with the finance committee on that to actually pay bills or permits online. Um, so we're trying to encourage people to use those alternative methods, they've worked for the last three months. Um, but if you have to come into city hall, um, you're going to be encouraged to make an appointment. And then we're going to try to ensure that we're not stacking people in our lobby areas for their own health as well as our employee safety. And uh, we'll be doing that for the next two weeks, and then by the third week, we'd be open Monday through Friday, ten to five, at least until phase three.
Thank you. Any other questions for the city manager? Seeing none, now we'll go on to boards, commissions, and committee reports. First up is myself, um, the mayor's forum have, we have been meeting um, the first Friday. Uh, of every month, we um, met again uh, the first Friday. Uh, of this month, uh, and of course, it's all been on Zoom, and so uh, uh. Actually, we, I think this last time we had our um, the county commissioner uh, Chair Hutchinson was a part of that mayor's forum. And uh, we had an opportunity to um, really have some discussions about uh, our. Our regional approach to what's going on with COVID right now. Um, and how much the uh, the jurisdictions and in in the county have really um. Been participating in the planning process this entire time. You know, we had some really good discussions about some additional funding that's come to um. The region uh, because of COVID, and uh, we've been getting uh, regular updates. About uh, you know, where we're at, you know, with phases, where we're at, uh, on that current, how many uh, people in Thurston County have been. Infected and so on and so forth, and um, it's been, it's been great to see how much uh. Communication's been going on uh, during during this time. And so uh, that is the mayor's forum, uh, then the transportation policy board uh, did meet uh, June tenth. And uh, because of COVID, uh, we did it uh, as over Zoom as well. Um, and actually, I think it was over Ring, um, another, another option that's out there. Um, for uh, video conferencing, and um, as I uh, had mentioned before. The transportation policy board under the Thurston Regional Planning Council um, has made every attempt. To allow for public comment uh, at the meeting, they've done this not only at the the council, full council. At uh, but also at transportation policy board. Um, in this circumstance, there is quite a few. Members of the public who was which wishing to address the transportation policy board on our uh. Twenty forty-five regional transportation plan, which was a an item that we were going to be discussing at that meeting. Um, a lot of the public uh, were opposed to a project within that plan. Um, that what we know um, where is as known as the Lock Cabin Road Extension. For us, it's that's Mullen Road Extension thirty seventh, um, and then for. For many years, uh, there's been uh, a plan to connect uh, the Lock Cabin Road Extension on the other side um, through L B A Woods. And so it has a more of a direct corridor uh, through there, as as uh. Everyone knows here in Lacey, we did those improvements to that corridor um, quite a while ago, and so. Uh, there is quite a few members of the public wishing to comment. Um, and unfortunately, when we we opened it up for public comments, uh, we were called, it's called Zoom Bomb. Um, there uh, they somehow were able to uh, take control of the meeting and not let us. Uh, mute the the participants, and um, there was a lot of really. Hateful language that came out during that time, and um, we had to actually close the meeting down. And then open it back up, um, and make sure everyone was muted that time around, and only allow at first the people that we knew. Was participating in in the meeting, and then um, we basically had to explain. Um, you know, we were, we were apologized for the the, some people weren't able to give public comments. Um, we had gone through several um, public comments, and when that happened, we tried to open it back up. Um, but. Wasn't a very effective way to take public comment because a lot of people. That were in the waiting room waiting to make public comment, um, as soon as you clicked on them to make public comments, uh. You know, they were, they'd be screaming, yelling, um, and so we actually. That caused a problem because we wanted to make sure we're allowed for public comments, um, especially on this. Item, um, and and there was just really no way to do that, uh, so what we. Did is um, at our next uh, um, action item, which was the. The board did, you know, take action to recommend that the council adopt the what moves you the twenty forty-five regional transportation plan, uh, but. That we forwarded with all the public comments that needed to be shared, and so we. We kept public comment open after that time, so anyone who wished to speak on that project had the oppo- opportunity to do that. And that would be a part of the public record that goes to the the full uh, TRPC board for consideration. And so uh, that's, that's what happened there. Um, and then the majority of the rest of the the meeting. Um, the board took action to recommend that the council approve the the funding recommendations, uh, funding recommendations for the. The twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-five federal transportation uh, funding call for projects, and uh. It was uh, you know. It went pretty smoothly for the most part, um, there was a couple of projects where um, some jurisdictions. Um, was asking for a lot more money, uh, or a lot more of the allotment. Um, for that project uh, than other jurisdictions, and we had to uh, figure out how to make it all work and. And it'd be a fair process and um, gives me great projects funded as possible, and so at the end, at the end, we came up with a. A funding recommendation that is is being forwarded on uh, to the full council for consideration. And that is my report, so next up is the the deputy mayor.
Um, so the um, Jazzcom met um.
Your video is off, Deputy Mayor.
Oh, is it? Oh, so sorry, so sorry, um. Well, I was looking for my notes on Jazzcom, um, so um. We met um, in June and we did an amended assessment for the budget, we uh. Lacey now is at two hundred and fifty-eight thousand nine hundred and twenty-seven, it. Was kind of an average of ten percent or less, um, and then we passed the twenty twenty budget. Um, and uh, we also had an update on uh, Jazzcom's um. Steps in opening up, and of of course, they have to do a lot of social distancing and different kinds of. Um, calling in and this kind of thing, um, and. Uh, staff is uh, staggering when they're there and stuff. The good news is that um, because of they've been shut down and stuff, they own. They have had very, very few um. Animals in the shelter because they, a lot of foster people, uh, foster animal care people stepped up. And I think they said, I I couldn't find my notes because you told me I had no video, uh, but um. There was only like fifteen cats left in the uh, there at the time. Now, that means, doesn't mean that that will always happen because the foster people will give them back, and they'll have to find homes, but. Um, and I think that covers everything, it was the budget and reopening. And this, and uh, the shelter at the time. And Scott, were you there at this meeting? Did I miss anything?
Some discussion about your reserve policies, and that's going to come back to Jazzcom in July.
Okay, yeah, that was on the agenda thingy too, but I I couldn't find it, uh, so. That's it, and the other two uh, committees I meet to um, Wednesday, so.
Great, thank, thank you, Deputy Mayor, uh, Councilor Cox.
Brady, uh, reporting on the Regional Housing Council, uh, we've been working on an interlocal agreement. That spells out the role of the council, who the members are, by that I mean the jurisdictions that participate. Um, the amount of money that we each contribute to making this organization go. And essentially how we will function. Um. Essentially, the work will involve collaborating on housing policy and putting our heads and resources together to try to develop. More um, low and moderate income housing, as well as deal with proposals and try to help. Uh, along accommodations for homeless people. Um, at our June eighteenth meeting. At our June eighteenth meeting, we went over edits to this document that we had all contributed, contributed and identified what remains to be resolved. And we hope by our July meeting, which will be the third Thursday at five, we will be able to complete this document and get moving on that. The Health and Human Services Council met for the last time in May and approved a partial list of recipients for housing and essential needs funding for twenty twenty-one. We received thirty applications for housing funding requesting a total of two point two million. We had about one point, almost seven million to distribute. So those funding recommendations, because they are tied to a federal housing and urban development timeline that the county has to meet, we went ahead and did. And so those requests remain ranged from, I mean, the recommendations range from fourteen thousand to four hundred thousand. The largest awards went to Habitat for Humanity for their Day of Vista Phase Four, and that was the four hundred thousand award. Homes First received two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for its Affordable Rental Homes program. And the Low Income Housing Institute received two hundred ninety thousand for its work on the Fleetwood Apartments. We held off on funding for housing basic needs and cold weather shelter and hazardous hazardous weather shelter applications. We we have identified nine that we're going to recommend for funding. But because funding itself, the funding sources is a little bit uncertain right now, we decided to hold off until we got a better sense of what's actually going to be there to distribute. Because nobody wants to offer money and then have to yank back the the promise. So and finally, I think one that most of us are going to be interested in is intercity transit has resumed bus service that started on Sunday. Pardon?
I said yay.
Yay, okay. Service levels are at about thirty-five percent of normal for now. And what this means is that stops are being served once an hour between eight thirty A M and eight thirty P M. Unfortunately, a few of the services, including the recently enacted the one route on Martin Way and service to Pierce County are going to remain suspended. And the two main reasons for the slow startup are obviously social distancing restrictions and what that means, and also the availability of drivers. Only about forty-five percent of the current prop of drivers are actually available and actively working because of concerns of coronavirus. Many of them are in an older age group that tends to be a little more vulnerable. And kind of like we did at City Hall, intercity transit is just bending over backwards to clean the buses to, we've created these flexi, plexiglass enclosures to try to protect the drivers. We're asking people to enter the bus from the back door rather than nearest the driver if if they're physically able to do that. So doing everything we can to keep the buses safe and to keep passengers safe distance from one another. So the staff hopes to gradually increase service as public health restrictions and the available driver pool allow. And that is my report.
Thank you. Councilor Greenstein.
Okay, I'll keep this relatively short. TCOM nine one one has been meeting throughout the COVID pandemic via Zoom, of course. The the main thing on the agenda there of this timeframe is the new radio system. So things are progressing on the radio system slower than we would have liked, primarily again because of COVID and the inability to get people there to do some of the work that needs to be done. But it is progressing and will will continue to progress. So we are making making pretty good headway there. EMS has also been meeting throughout the COVID experience here, and biggest thing going on there is budget. And primarily, the concerns with future budgets. EMS, which is our Medic One Emergency Medical Services, is operating using reserves for quite some time now, for several years, they've had to add reserves to the budget to make the budget work. That is coming to a point where they are going to have to go out for a levy lidlet. The they've just formed a committee to start discussing when that may happen. But the discussion is that it'll either be this November or next November that they would be looking at going out for additional tax dollars. So I'll keep you informed to let you know more as I hear it, but that's the primary conversation going on right now. And that is my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Miller.
Oh, yeah. TRPC met earlier in the month, and aside from what the mayor was discussing with the transportation plan, I think the the major takeaway was, you know, as a lot of you know, the legislature is looking to see if we can find a secondary site for, I guess in this case, a third site for a commercial airport here in the state of Washington. So a committee has convened to, you know, study the feasibility of potentially having one in Thurston County. And so the goals are as follows. We're looking for a shortlist of no more than six airports by January twenty twenty-one, and then narrow that down to two by September of twenty twenty-one. And then, you know, do the feasibility of construction and 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 those kinds of things. You know, the main goals are, you know, environmental responsibility, economic feasibility, social equity and public benefit, you know, are we going to benefit from having an airport here in Thurston County? And what's that going to look like in the future? I, you know, aside from, well, I guess, you know, a personal opinion is, you know, it's pretty close to to Seattle as it is. I don't know if 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 we have the population for it, but the 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 numbers say that we may have the population for it, you know, by twenty forty. And so here we are, you know, getting the the groundwork laid, you know, a couple decades in advance. There's some population numbers that go along with this report, site selections, you know, you know, we have, you know, the most available land, so to speak, you know, in in airport requires a lot of impervious surfaces. And we have, you know, you know, kind of a mole issue. So so I don't know if, you know, the the pocket gover thing would keep us from from, you know, having an airport. It certainly keeps us from having enough residential homes for people to buy in our area. It keeps us our inventory kind of low. And so that's our our main takeaway from that meeting. Thurston Thryse has not met, and we're hoping to next month. LTAC meets tomorrow, and so I'll be able to give a report on that in our next meeting. Thurston County Coalition Against Trafficking has turned their annual race into a virtual race, meaning that, you know, you run your five K in a safe place near you, turning your time, still using timers and chip bibs, raising funds for the awareness of trafficking that we can continue to put the the program through the schools so that we can fund the program, so the schools don't have to pay for the program that teaches teachers and students how to, you know, recognize the signs of trafficking so that, you know, if if there is a kid in their school being trafficked, you know, it can be reported. And so again, the State Patrol has told us that, you know, prevention, every dollar of prevention is worth a thousand dollars worth of operations because the number of traffickers that they actually catch is nothing compared to what's really out there. So a great work that these guys are doing. And that is my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Stedman is out town right now. He's with his family, spreading his father's ashes. So just want to let, you know, Councilmember Stedman know that our our thoughts and prayers are with you. And we look forward to seeing you again and hanging there, buddy. I know it's a tough time for you. And we'll we'll see you when you get back. Next up is Councilmember Kunkel.
Yeah, mirroring the mayor, Stedman, we all, we all love you. We we're keeping you in our prayers, you and your family. If you're listening today, we're we're thinking of you, sir. So God bless and Godspeed. So the Visitor Convention Bureau has been meeting, as well as the Economic Development Council. The focus for the V C B has been primarily budget, trying to work, do more with less. And they have been strategizing ways to cut down on on their costs of operating while still trying to be effective for our community. And then Economic Development Council, their focus has primarily been on helping local businesses any way they can through Thurston Strong, through helping with the P P E, helping with distributing funds that are available. So the the E D C has been doing some pretty, pretty outstanding work in in trying to help facilitate easy transitions for businesses that are opening up, make sure they're compliant and safe for people to go to go and and utilize or patronize their business. And they've just been a great source for this community. We're very fortunate to have an E D C here. And that's pretty much sums up my report.
Great. Well, we have reached the end of this agenda. We will be taking a recess for, you know, no more than five minutes as we end this meeting, and then we'll be coming back as a work session. And so this is where we'll be signing off for the majority of people for who've been watching this this Zoom meeting, and then we will get back open for the work session. Do we have the, will it be the same link? Or do we have to open up to a different link? Scott, where?
You end up just staying on, but will be paused from a broadcast standpoint for five minutes.
Sounds good.
So we don't have to do anything then, correct?
We just can turn off our video or whatever.
Yeah, we just turn off video and when we're get back open for a work session, we'll do that. So until next time, we keep it classy, Lacey. All this meeting adjourned.